There's somebody in the doorway, here she comes.
Did you say you have to go somewhere tonight for work?
I believe on Thursday, Wednesday.
Oh, and it's like so warm in those days.
Yeah.
Can you go somewhere warm at least?
St. Louis.
I'm warm, but I'm not in here.
Yeah. I usually don't get snow.
Yeah, I'm like, why do I look like that?
Well, that can take his coat off.
It does probably, you do anything.
Right.
Hello. All right, it's Monday, January 28th, 2019. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKB, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yeah.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight on this cold wintry evening. Did get a message from Kurt Rebholz this afternoon that he is very ill today, so he is at home trying to get better. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda, so I move to amend tonight's agenda by deleting item number four and deleting item number six C. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Item number four is our student reports. We've asked Libby and Jacob to stay home today because they were not in school today. And item six C is our financial audit, which our auditors will not be here tonight either. So we're going to postpone that to a future board meeting. We did get a copy of the audit last week, so we'll have some more time to review that. So, motion and a second on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None?
Mr. President, could I just add one thing for the student report, just because it's a proud mom moment? I'd like to point out that both, the West Bend West varsity dance team and the West Bend East varsity dance team are both going to state. They'll be going Saturday, well Friday, they're leaving to La Crosse. We also have three dancers that are being recognized for solos. From east, we have Brianna Vitkis, and I believe, someone help me out, I think she's a junior. Then we have two seniors, Lindsay Keller, and one little Leah Jusman, going for their solos. So, sorry, that's my proud mom moment. And if you're available to send off the girls, I think it's pretty exciting. I'm sure someone else in the audience could tell me if this has happened in the past, but I know it hasn't happened for the last four or five years that both teams are going. So, really exciting for West Bend.
Very cool, thank you. After my amendments then, I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Great, we have an agenda tonight, and we will start with public participation. We'll start with Diana Swillinger. Just state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. I'll be much shorter tonight. Diana Swillinger, 614 Jefferson Street, West Bend. I have three students, three of my kids are currently in the district schools, and I've been a member of the Pathways Governance Council since 2014. I was unable to attend the work session last week. I was out of town for a family trip, but from what I understand, it was promising and positive, so I was glad to hear that. I'm guessing it's apparent right now that Pathways is a highly valued option for many students, and that it is in the best interest of students to continue to allow them this unique educational environment and programming. I believe the administration's concern about the school may stem from the turnover and empty positions in the district administration, and that may have created a disconnect between Pathways and the district. And now, I believe with new administrators in place who are interested in the success of the school, a positive and effective partnership can be reestablished. I'm looking forward to participating in the development of key relationships with administrators, teachers, and counselors within the district to fully expose the tremendous opportunity that Pathways provides to the students who need it most, who desire to excel beyond any limitations that exist in traditional settings, and who think and learn differently. This school is a gem with limitless potential, and I think we're all ready to really hit the ground running on that. In anticipation of the continuation of this partnership, I wanted to thank all of you for your careful consideration of every stakeholder's needs and for interest in keeping the Pathways dream alive. Thank you for investing in the students of our community who are accepting the challenge that Pathways offers in project-based, career-focused, student-influenced, student-influenced, stimulating, and rigorous education. So, mostly, thank you for all the time you're investing in this, appreciate it.
Thank you. Chelsea Adoman-Davis.
My name is Chelsea Adoman-Davis, third time's a charm, Chelsea.
Chelsea. Sorry.
Again, I am speaking to you about Pathways. I realize this is the third time you've heard from me, but as a child advocate, I'm used to speaking up for those who aren't comfortable doing so. I realize I won't sway opinions at this point, but after last week's work session, I felt a few more things needed to be said, and I'm a little more off the cuff than usual, so forgive me if I ramble or stumble. First of all, going into last week's work session, as a parent, seeing the school board in action, I was a little disappointed that the information shared wasn't requested a year ago, when the extension was decided upon. You know, this work session was even sort of a last-minute decision in the meeting two weeks ago. It seems that you had a year to decide, and were waiting to the last minute to really try to understand what Pathways is about. And with the weather last week, I'm not sure how many of you were able to get into Pathways, or if you've taken that opportunity. I think only a few of you have, but the best way to understand Pathways is to go in and see their showcase nights, and talk to the students, and see what they're working on. So, you know, this is... The other point I wanted to make is that there was a lot of discussion about the test results. In my education classes, as a university student, I had an entire semester on valid and reliable assessments. That would be two hours a week for 16 weeks. We talked about results and tests. Last week, you spent about an hour discussing test results that are inarguably not valid and not reliable, based on too few data points. And again, there's so much more to a school than test scores. There are 60 families being immediately affected by your decision this evening, one way or another, for good or for struggle, and many others waiting in the wings to see what happens. These kids are out-of-the-box thinkers, they're hands-on learners, and many of them have struggled for years before finding Pathways. And for Pathways, they see that as their path to graduation from high school, and being able to go on to further education and careers. And so I am completely serious when I say that your decision this evening will change the lives of those 60 families, as well as many others in the district. You know, last week, we were wearing yellow scarves, and I have mine in my bag, I meant to bring it up, but those yellow scarves were to raise awareness that last week was National School Choice Week. These kids need a choice. Fair does not mean the same for each kid, and these kids need choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? We'll move on to our action item list tonight. The first action item is our consent agenda, which has minutes of the January 14th regular board meeting, disbursements posted to January 28th, 2019, a ratification of a contract, and head start status report.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please sign... Tommy seconded that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We'll move on to our action items under revenues and expenses in the aggregate for July 1st through December of 2018. Mr. Stelmacher.
Good evening. All of you should have the aggregate of revenues, and I really have two comments to the whole page. First of all, the percentages are very low as percentage of budget. Keep in mind, this is to the end of December, and also keep in mind, even though we start spending money on July 1st, revenues don't start coming in until September, and tax settlements first in January. That said, on the general fund, Fund 10, I have one thing to point out. Under 900 other revenue, budget of $337,000, and you see a number bigger than that, $572, just to point out that there's also an 800 category, that would be land and other real property sales. So that was the Commonwealth sale that I believe happened last fall, $520-some thousand. So, the real number there versus budget of $337 should have been around $51,000. Going down, just to point out, the non-referendum and referendum debt, of course, tax settlements. Some landowners pay at the end of December, some pay half in January, some half in July. So that money comes in primarily January, February, probably about two-thirds. No district is quite the same. And then in August, the balance. So we will make budget in those categories, but it comes in essentially three times a year. Any quick questions regarding revenues? Otherwise, we'll go to expenditures. And even here, the picture on expenditures versus budget really starts to clarify, I would say, January, February of the year. First two, under general fund, you see salaries and benefits. If you look at our pay schedules, we should be in the 38.5% range. So those are pretty much on budget, from what I can tell, after 15 days in the district. If you go down to 800, inter-fund transfer, that $7 million is going to be 10 to 27, that's done at the end of the year. So that will probably stay a zero until June. And if you look at other funds, Fund 38 and 39, there again, are referendum and non-referendum debt. Some of the payments are done in the fall, and the bulk of the payments, which would be principal and interest, would be done in April. That's all I have. If anyone else has any questions? I'm hoping to amend this report the next time I give it, to give you a little bit more detail, and as we get to the end of the year, I would really like to be able to point out, or whoever is in my position, they can point out, here's where we're going to win/lose on the budget.
Tim, just a quick question. With the sale of Barden, will you give us a recommendation, March, as to what are the different options available for that revenue? And so, does it go right into Fund 10? Does it go into another fund based on it was a fixed asset, and so we put it into a fixed asset account, and it strictly would be a board decision as to how you want to utilize those funds? But would you make sure before you leave, give us some recommendations as to how we should track the Barden proceeds?
That's a great point, and I should be able to do that, but March would be better for me than February. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I move to approve the revenues and expenses in the aggregate for July through December 2018.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move along to our West Bend East and West Girls Swim and Dive Team Co-op, two-year agreement.
So Ralph Lass is here to speak with me on the swim co-op. We put the East and West together for the swim co-op because together they can sustain a team full of junior varsity and varsity players. Separately, they would not be able to sustain both, both schools would not be able to sustain a varsity and a junior varsity team. And so, every two years, the WIAA requires that we approve the co-op again, and review that, and approve whether or not we want to have that. So I would ask Ralph to address any questions you may have on that.
Just a quick, Ralph, any idea how many years we've been? I mean, it's a long time that we've had this co-op, right? I mean...
Yeah, it's been some time now. I don't know how many years exactly.
If I, if I may, I move to approve the West Bend East and West Bend West Girls Swim and Dive Team Cooperative Two-Year Agreement for the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2020, and 21 school years. Got excited with all those 20s.
I'll second that. Any questions?
I'll comment that I know it's been at least 12 years.
Okay, I knew it was a long time, so, well, look at you.
Well, we had an exchange student in 2007.
Okay.
And he was looking, yeah, he was on the swim team for like a week. It was, it was a little more rigorous than he was expecting, so, I'm proud to say that.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item is our out-of-state field trip request for the East High Dance Team.
Typically, we bring out-of-state field trip requests well in advance, a year in advance to you for approval. This is a very unique situation. Our East High Dance Team was recognized as the most spirited dance team in America by varsity brands, and they have their award ceremony, which they invite at their expense six people from the team to come and participate, receive the award for the school. And so the captains and the remaining senior on the team, along with the coach chaperones, would be attending, if you approve, in order to accept that award for East High School.
I move to approve four students and two coaches/chaperones to travel to Florida, February 8th through the 11th, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We'll talk about now an easement to We Energies with Mr. Us.
Good evening, everyone. We Energies is doing some system upgrades in the area of River Road and Decor Avenue, which will actually enhance the cables coming into our facility. And they have asked for three separate easements, one on our property, and there will be a couple others that revert back to the district. On the drawing, if you see a dotted yellow line that's running north-south, that's already an easement, and that's where our power comes into the building now. The east-west line on the drawing will actually be the new feed for the building. But as I said, it will be a system upgrade for We Energies and for Us as well.
When are they doing this?
They're going to, probably, they're going to shoot for spring break, so there's going to be at least a 24-hour shutdown there involved when they switch things over, so we have to coordinate with them on all of that.
So, are there easements, and they look very typical? One question, though, one of the things that we give up as part of the easements is the ability to build anything in that area. Is there anything in any master plan, or anything that you're aware of, that that would jeopardize?
No, they, especially the east-west one, that was the one I was most concerned about, but it's actually on the backside of the parking lot, so it's actually quite a ways away. And for this next referendum, we're not planning on expanding the facility at that point, so nothing foreseeable beyond that.
I move to approve the easements to We Energies as described in documents WR number 412-9506, WR number 412-9523, and WR number 431-7407.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions for Dave? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our Pathways Charter School contract. Don, do you want to start?
Yes. The school board has had discussions regarding the Pathways Charter since December of 2017. It's time for the board to make a decision regarding the Pathways Charter. I believe that there are three different options that the board can look at, but there may be other options as well. I want to emphasize, no matter what the board chooses to do, the district office will do everything possible to make sure that the Pathway students are successful. So the three options, the way that I see them, the first one is the board can vote to notify the Governance Council of their intent to renew the charter. I would recommend that the renewal be no less than three years, and can be no more than five years. If the board votes to notify the Governance Council of their intent to renew, a contract needs to be developed and approved prior to the last board meeting in May, so it can be submitted to DPI in June. The second option would be, the board can vote to notify the Governance Council of their intent to renew the charter as a 912 program. I would recommend that the renewal be no less than three years, and no longer than five years. If the board votes to notify the Governance Council of their intent to renew the charter for a 912 program, a contract needs to be developed and approved no later than the last board meeting in May, so that the contract can be submitted to DPI in June. Third option, the board can vote to notify the Governance Council of their intent to non-renew the charter. If the charter is not renewed, the Pathways Charter will end as of June 30th, 2019. We have had a significant amount of discussion regarding Pathways in the last two months, and unfortunately, I have not been able to change my original recommendation to non-renew the Pathways Charter. I believe that the mission purpose is the why, and the pillars are the how. It appears as if we have done a nice job with the how. Our teachers are providing an environment that is appealing to the students, we are using project-based learning as a major part of the teaching and learning process, and the students are provided career-based learning opportunities. What I am uncertain of is if we have met the meeting, if we have met in our meeting the mission of the school, and if the current mission is still viable in 2019. Pathways was designed to provide academic rigor and be a high-performing school while still spending equal to or less than the students in Badger or the high school. There are questions if we are meeting the academic rigor that was originally proposed. Since the inception of Pathways, the career-based learning opportunities at the high school have significantly expanded, so now all students, whether they are Pathway students or high school students, have the opportunity for career-based learning and individual learning plans. If the board chooses to not renew the contract to the Pathways Charter, it is the responsibility of all staff involved to ensure a smooth transition for the future success of all Pathway students. In order to facilitate this transition, the following has occurred. Principals and/or assistant principals from Badger, East, and West High School have met with Jen Gettermann and Laura Jackson to discuss the transition plan. The team is committed to prioritizing time to meet with the students and families during the month of February. In addition to the items on the document, the student will have the opportunity to continue with the same counselors as they currently are working with, that we will meet with all students and parents to discuss the reasons why they chose to go to Pathways, and make sure that we are fulfilling those reasons. Based on the discussions during the student meetings, the students will be individually scheduled into classes and classrooms that meet the unique learning and academic social needs. The full array of programs and courses at the high school in Badger will be available to all Pathway students as appropriate for the individual needs. This includes interventions, honors, advanced placement, placement in the personalized learning house, and at-risk services. If needed, based on the individual meetings with students and families, the curriculum instruction team will work to develop courses to have a blend of learning approaches, included but not limited to project-based learning. We will meet the needs of all students that are currently enrolled in Pathways, to include possible courses and programs that are specifically tailored to the students currently enrolled in Pathways. Finally, what I would say, that if the board chooses to not extend the charter, all students currently enrolled in Pathways will be given an opportunity to continue with the program or course offerings that utilize project-based learning. We will continue to provide those unique opportunities until all the students who are currently enrolled in Pathways have a high school diploma. We will also look at those courses to find out if they are sustainable, and if so, can we further offer those courses to other high school students who would potentially benefit from the same opportunity? And so, again, I realize it is a very difficult decision, and I emphasize to you that whatever the board chooses to do, the district office is committed to make sure that it is a seamless transition, and so if you go forward with another five years, or three to five years, we're going to do everything possible to make sure that it works. If you move it into a high school program, we're going to do everything possible to make sure it works. If you choose to not renew the charter, we will do everything we can to make sure that we have a seamless transition, which will include a variety of opportunities, one of which will be to work with each kid, student individually, to make sure that they have a program in place, that they can be successful at the high school throughout their entire high school career. And so, certainly, we'll try to answer any questions you may have. Laura is here as well, can answer any questions you might have, but I, and those are the three options that I see it. There might be other options as well.
Don, you talked about current students and finishing out their high school careers. If the contract is renewed, we would have to move the location of Pathways, no matter what, most likely up to the high school. So, what you just described of the current Pathway students finishing their high school careers through what sounds like a very similar program to what they're doing now, what's the difference?
It would give them an opportunity to take some, a project-based learning approach, but it would certainly not be a full Pathways-type school. There will be an opportunity for students to be involved with honors classes, involved with the entire high school curriculum, and if students choose that they need to be involved with a, would like to be involved with a project-based learning style, that what we don't want to do is to have someone who's a junior in high school, who has been involved with a process their entire career, and now find themselves not being able to adapt to what's happening in a regular classroom, or a different type of classroom. And so, that's the difference. Not that by any means will all of the kids be in a project-based environment all the time, no. It'll be depending on the conference, the meetings that we have with parents and students to figure out what's the best process available, and, but it would be part of the high school as opposed to a separate school, a separate charter, and after year one or year two, we would look to see if some of the same strategies can be used for other non-Pathway students, so that we could provide the same opportunity for all of our high school students. If you choose to extend the charter, there's, you truly have to, obviously, the current location is not an option, so you then either have to move the location to another non-school location, and I think that will be extremely expensive. That we've, the city has worked closely with the Governance Council. The Governance Council has negotiated a very favorable contract with the city that more than likely that cost will go up as opposed to down, and so it seems like the only other opportunities would be at Badger or the high school. I believe the high school is a better opportunity, because then you have the ability to take advantage of the high school courses that are being offered. Now, the last comment that I really would emphasize, and I think Tiffany brought it up earlier, and that is that when Pathways was originally started, we didn't have all of the phenomenal opportunities at the high school that we currently have. of the phenomenal opportunities at the high school that we currently have. And so, that every student that we have at the high school has the opportunity for an individualized learning plan. Every student has the opportunity for a internship, an apprenticeship, a on-the-job experience. Not everyone has the ability to have the in-depth personalized learning, or, excuse me, the in-depth type of instruction, the project-based learning instruction, but that's a technique, that's a tool, that's not the goal. That's just one of the reasons, one of the ways you get to the goal. The goal is the mission, and so it seems like we do have the ability to do what the mission originally was designed for in our current system, and now it's our job to make sure that we provide the instructional opportunities for all kids to be successful.
Tiffany.
Go ahead. With all due respect, Superintendent Kierker-Gard, I disagree with your recommendation. I just don't see, I know you're very, you've got a very qualified staff, so, and I understand that, but I don't see, within this timeframe, from now, which is where we're going to be in February, and then the coming, then September, when the next school year starts, how we're going to have this seamless transition. I just don't see it. Transitions like this take time, if there is going to be one. I also, I, I, I'm sold on Pathways. I think it is, it's a good model. And as far as rigor, so on is concerned, I think those, that can be addressed. And we heard about the concern about the test scores being valid or invalid as such. I would agree. So, I think there's going to be a lot of students and a lot of families going to be, so to speak, more than left out in the cold, sub-zero temperatures, so to speak, but going to be left out in the cold when it comes to addressing the needs of the student. Pathways appears to do that, and I'm really concerned about meeting those needs. So, I would opt for, number one, is what I would opt for, but.
So, we've heard from a lot of students, and we've heard from a lot of families, and we recently also received an email, and it seemed like there was some underlying kind of, I'll make some general comments, that many of the students, as you all heard, said that they felt that they perform better in a smaller environment or in a closer environment. Maybe this is a Laura question, I'm not sure, Don, so you can kind of direct. But, you know, if we want to use student Nancy Justman, who really struggles with a classroom of twenty-two of my peers, how are you going to ensure that I understand geometry? Which is kind of a joke with me anyway, so.
Laura, can you answer? You know, one of the areas that, before Laura gets up, is that in Badger, in the last several years, we have developed the personalized learning house, and so that does give our seventh and eighth graders an opportunity to be in a smaller, different environment. But Laura, you can answer those questions more elegant than me.
So, that was one of the questions that we posed directly to the administration at Badger and the high schools when we were speaking with them last week. And one of the things they talked about is if the smaller environment comes out in the family meetings as one of the key things that they were seeking in going to Pathways, then even looking, as the students are scheduled into classes, that will be a consideration. So, let's say a student has a study hall, they would not be in the large group study hall, they would be in a smaller, more condensed study hall with fewer students and a smaller adult-to-child ratio. In that study hall, then, it'd be a structured setting. So, if you were struggling in geometry, perhaps part of that study hall is that person, that study hall teacher is reviewing where you're at, and then helping you access some of those supports. So, current intervention supports, current lab-type supports that we have for students.
So, but in the actual geometry class? I mean, if we've really heard from these kids that they, many of them, I'm not trying to say everyone, but many of them seem to really, that was a number-one concern for them, that they need more of a, well, personalized learning is, I guess, but more of a one-on-one almost with their teacher. How are we going to accomplish that, or how are we going to? I mean, we can all appreciate, study hall help is, study hall help, I think I shoveled too much snow today, is great, but, you know, if you're the teacher, and I'm trying to understand geometry, and I sit there for fifty minutes or whatever the classes, and I don't understand it, I think we're going to have a hard time in study hall trying to reteach it to me. So, how are we going to fix that for these students?
So, the current, if they were in the typical setting, classroom setting for geometry, the structure of the geometry program that we're now utilizing has students working in small groups, and the teacher going to those small groups on a more frequent basis. So, rather than the traditional teacher modeling, and then all students doing, their, students are doing much more, but they are doing that in small groups within the classroom. So, again, those meetings are going to be significant. Some of the students may be taking a class through the Ebola program in the future, or another online program that we have within our system. So, it just, it depends on the individual, like, why that's so important.
Okay, so, I mean, you're going to sit down with them, so there are other options for them. They aren't just, hey, you're in a class with twenty-five, good luck.
Yeah, no, there are other options.
Okay.
Nancy, this would maybe go back to Ken as well, and that would be, if we find that there are, Laura, don't leave too. So, that, if we need to create a whole new class for next year, or three classes for next year, that is strictly designed for students who are currently in Pathways, that are in need of a different type of math instruction, because they've had a different math instruction the last two or three or four or one year, then that's part of what will happen based on working with Laura and Jen and the principals, and go from there. And so, even though there's the potential to save some money in this, when it's all said and done, this was never designed to be a, we're going to save X amount of dollars. And so, if we have to use a significant amount of money that could be saved, because we're going to add four new sections of classes that are centered around this type of, you know, and so, maybe next year is four, maybe the following year is three, and maybe the following year is two, or maybe, maybe for the next five years, we decide, you know what, this has been extremely successful with a variety of different kids, we need to look at, are there some other opportunities for other students who are not currently enrolled in Pathways to duplicate the same success that we're having currently once we're at the high school? And so, Ken, you're correct, this is not an easy transition, it's going to take some time, this is going to require all hands on deck to make sure that we're providing, there's going to be some hiccups along the road, but the bottom line is that whichever one of these three options you choose, it's the district's responsibility to make it work. And so, that is what we will tell you, is if you go with the first one, we're going to make that work, and we're going to do everything we can to work with the governance council, to come up with a strategy in place that provides success for the future. If it's a high school program, we'll do that as well. If it's not to renew, and it's to transition back in, then the key is for us to make sure that that's a very seamless transition, as seamless as possible, even though I know that I can't guarantee that there aren't going to be some hiccups, because I know there will be.
Will the teachers from Pathways be following the kids to the high school?
So, currently, if their certification would allow that, yes.
So, there could be some continuity for those, for those students in that way?
We have, like, the eighth grade class, for example, has a larger number of students, but you heard during the Pathways presentation previously, that some of the students have moved through math more quickly than a year at a time, and have, so just because they're eighth-grade students doesn't mean they're all moving into the same math class together, to go with your example of a math class. However, as Superintendent Kierker-Gard shared, if we, through this process, determine we want to keep as many of those eighth graders together as a unit in a math class next year, it may mean that we're running a math class with seventeen instead of eighteen, which is our normal cut. And so, we may be more open to doing that than we would have without this occurring.
And I'm going to say, it might even be twelve as opposed to eighteen. So, that if the goal truly is to provide an opportunity for the students who are currently enrolled in Pathways, then we have to look outside of our number formulas that we currently have and make it work, because otherwise, you get back into the formulas of eighteen before a class flies, or we keep going, and so you have to look outside the box on that.
Another thing that's possible at Pathways is that maybe students have earned more science credits than their grad year would indicate would be typical. So, again, looking at that student individually for science is really important, that transcript review is an essential part of a transition.
So, just, you know, for layman's terms, so if we have a student who's done all the science that we offer, and now they're going to come to the high school, their next opportunity would be that they could go to UWW, or UW-Milwaukee, or MPTC, or what would be the next solution for them?
So, I would say that they've not had the opportunity to take all the science classes offered at the high schools, but they may have earned their three high school required credits for science. So, if they earn their three required credits for science, they could, again, look at the other courses that are taught. So, Project Lead the Way is one example, the medical classes offered through that, if that was an interest. If engineer, we have engineering courses, if that was a focus, but you're right, they could utilize the Start College Now or Early College Credit options to attend a course at one of the universities.
So, Laura, I attended one of the Pathways showcase nights, and I found it to be really, really interesting. We've talked about the fact that project-based learning is available at the other schools. I can't say that I've investigated it there. Can you give me some examples, some real-life examples of where that happens, how often it happens? So I can understand it a bit more.
So, I can give some. If Mr. Schloss wants to enlighten us on a few more, that's, he's more than welcome to do so. Recently, a particular social studies teacher was sharing how they flipped their classroom, and to really allow students to do the reading outside, so they can do the hands-on investigation and creation and exploration inside, well, inside the classroom, and with the support of the teacher nearby. And so, we've seen, last year, some of you, I know Tiffany was there, I can't, I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't remember who else, on a snowy day last February, was at the Holocaust exhibit, that a lot of, it was a cross-disciplinary unit, so there were students involved in that for multiple courses, and that's another example of where they, that would be a more guided project-based. So, when you go into project-based, you start with a gradual release of responsibility, because if students had not experienced that before, you want to model and walk them through that process, and the creation of that driving question. So, sometimes those are done as a whole class, here's the driving question, and sometimes those are done with, okay, we're researching on this topic, and individuals within maybe biology pick their driving question and investigate that.
No, I would just echo what Laura said, but I think a lot of the direction and movement in public education is to apply your learning, rather than just regurgitate information back to a teacher, just mark true or false on a test, or, you know, match multiple-choice answers to the question. So, for example, I was just thinking of a class, as Laura was talking before about maybe some of the classes that the students at Pathways haven't had, Careers in Medicine is a great example. The students, what they do in that class is they learn all about careers in medicine, and then some students will get partnered up, and they will go out to the hospital for a period of two or three weeks, I can't remember exactly how long, and they'll learn about the various careers in the medical profession, and then they do a PowerPoint, and they do a report on what they've learned. But also, as part of that class, students have to go out, they have to explore a medical profession on their own, too, ahead of that time, and they have to do some onsite hours to learn about the various profession. But again, education has moved from, you know, facts and filling kids' heads up with knowledge to applying that knowledge and what they've learned. So, as Laura mentioned, a lot of our classes are moving away from just paper pencil tests to projects themselves, whether, it doesn't have to be a course that is predicated on it, it can be just your English nine class, you can be asked to write, for example, you know, something that might be published, as an example, and I know our teachers do that as well, and send that in.
One of the classes that you might be most familiar with is, earlier this year, you approved the entrepreneurial class, and to sum that up, regardless of their career pathway, students taking that class would first apply, and then within the career pathway that they're interested in, they would determine what is the need and a problem that needs to be solved, and then work on solving that problem as part of that class, and they would be connected with professionals in the field in which they're seeking to, first, in which they've defined the problem, and then are seeking to solve that. So, that's probably the most concrete example that you would be most familiar with.
I'll just give you one more, you were talking about geometry before. The math curriculum at the high school, a good part of that curriculum is CPM. Okay, and in that kind of format, and in that setting, students are working in groups every day, because as we know, typically, a lot of people don't work in isolation in a career, but they work with other people, and that's just a great example of every day, working on just a math problem. I would argue that is a project in itself, working on one or two math problems, instead of, the old days, sitting in rows, having your teacher go up to the front of the classroom while the rest of the student body just kind of sat there and waited for their homework assignment to be given. So, yeah, a lot of things going on at the high school that are different than years ago.
Yep, Mr. Schloss.
I'd like to make a motion to renew the charter contract for three years, and approve a new contract no later than May twenty, twenty nineteen.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? Motion on the floor, any second? That motion will not get a second.
I'll weigh in a little bit, you know, it's very personal to me, because five or six years ago, I was thrilled at the possibility of enrolling my own daughter in a charter school, and certainly, the way it was marketed, you know, by T.C. Motzkis, was fantastic. It looked at that advanced learning, that accelerated learning, high rigor, the project-based, but it seemed appealing, and that's something, from my own personal experience, my niece and nephew are in a charter school in North Carolina, that it was just a great option, and I am all for choices and options, but the reality of it, when she was enrolled, is really about only fifteen to twenty percent of the kids were aligned to the mission and purpose of the school at that time. And that complicated, I think, for my daughter, the learning experience, which is why we made a decision to go back to Badger, and at that time, a new statewide bill was put into place that allowed kids to gain high school credit earlier if they met certain criteria, whatever. So, that, for her, met the purpose she was seeking, and also met the social needs, peer needs for her, but the school itself wasn't necessarily designed for the student that didn't do well in a large setting. It was designed for the student who wanted to move faster, who wanted more rigor, who wanted more project-based type learning, those types of things. So, meeting the needs in terms of the agreement of the charter, it's hard for me to recommend that we renew the charter when I feel like there's so many variables that have not been made clear to the public in terms of who is, who is the charter, who is the pathway, what students are excelling there, how is the organization sound in its stability within its administration? I know we've had administrations since T.C. Motzkis left within six weeks of the school opening. That was a time of instability, that was difficult. That was a time of instability that was difficult. What was solid to me at that point is the fact that you're educators, you have highly skilled educators in that classroom, meeting the needs of kids. So that was some consolation, but anytime you have skilled leadership leave very soon after an organization is begun, that creates some challenges, I think, for the identity, for that strong foothold, for that reputation. A charter school, it was, it was five-year contract, so that those first couple of years, there may be some challenges. But by years three, four, and five, I expect there to be a certain amount of confidence in the recruitment of kids. I expect there to be, the performance, the achievement goals are being met. I expect the fiscally viability of the organization. I know it was presented between $4,000 and $5,000 a student. It's certainly much higher than that in terms of the cost per pupil, and I think from a contract perspective, I have to consider that as well. At the beginning of the school, I understand that TC felt the school was well-positioned to meet the high demands of accountability being put forward by the DPI in terms of students', students' goals. But we didn't meet those goals of accountabilities in these last couple of years, and that was part of the contract as well. It's really from that kind of factual contract basis that makes the renewal, for me, very challenging. The Governance Council, I have the greatest amount of respect for these individuals that have dedicated six-plus years to ensure that this special option is provided to our kids. The teachers, incredible, they're the types of teachers that you pray your kids will have because you're so committed beyond any seven-to-five job. Your job is 24 hours, and I know they're on your heart and mind constantly. That's, it's amazing to have you as educators within our district. But I think we have to think about, if only fifteen to twenty percent of the kids were really aligned to the mission originally, it's that other eighty percent that maybe we missed something for. And maybe there's something better that needs to be developed to meet their needs. And I think what Don is saying is, we're going to fill in those gaps that exist and see these kids through. But at the same time, I would encourage our administration to look at, what did we miss in the original development of Pathways? And did we miss that the greater need was for these kids who didn't do well in large spaces, who didn't do well in large classrooms, who felt alienated or had issues that needed to be addressed more in depth from their teachers? That might have been the school that we needed to have in 2013. It's been, in my mind, successful. I can look at the families and the students, the innovations that have been brought to the high school because of the charter. So I think partly there's a perspective involved in saying, sometimes a business startup, it doesn't go on for thirty years, but it goes on for a time in which it positively affects the people it was commissioned to address. So I do commend you all. I don't know, you know, I know tonight I'm voting to not renew the Pathways Charter, really based on the principles and standards of authorizing the charter. You don't do it based on a short-term renewal or probationary period. You don't do it if the performance achievements haven't been met. Looking at the enrollment, it's been fluctuating so much over the years, so there's been, to me, a lack of stability in its identity and that I have to consider for the contract. So I probably ramble there, but those are just some thoughts from really being present at the very beginning and development of Pathways. And I've said it before, the duplication of services, there are some awesome programs being offered, and if we can do that for a more equitable formula for all kids, then I think too, that's something in terms of being responsible or good stewards of our tax dollars.
I see an opportunity for us to create something new that that serves the types of students that have been drawn to Pathways as what it has become in the last few years. My biggest concern is that because that takes time to formulate, there are kids that this is their only shot at high school, and I don't want them to sacrifice their, their one shot. And we need to make sure that they don't fall through the cracks, and I'm confident that Don and Laura are, have that in mind. So those are my considerations for the decision that I'm making tonight.
I guess this is probably for Laura and maybe even for Mr. Schloss. So, you know, Don had mentioned that, you know, the team will be meeting with students and families in February. I realize students wouldn't agree with us when we say there's not much time left in the year, but there's, there's a lot of things that have to happen there. So I'm assuming you have a team then that will be working on this at both probably Badger and the high school?
So based on the decision made tonight, the counselor that is currently serving the students at Pathways.
And that would be the guidance counselor, just, okay.
Correct. Along with a Pathway staff member. So the students identify differently with the different coaches, and that would be driven by Pathways. Again, we don't want the meeting to be too overwhelming because if you're a student coming in and now there's eight adults that, and you only really know a couple of them really well, that can be an intimidating time to sit down and talk about your future. So the staff from either Badger or the high schools would likely compile one of the current guidance counselors, as well as one of the current administrators at those schools, so that they can be thinking about all of the classes, the houses, the teaching styles in order to make the best decision for students, should that be the decision that's made tonight.
So I echo Tony's comments and Tiffany's comments. I mean, I think that the charter school, when it was originally designed, the mission was, you know, clear. And I think the school has kind of evolved into something that maybe is not exactly aligned with the original mission. I do have very high hopes that we can, you know, together, obviously, administration and families, come up with something better. And my biggest concern, as I stated in the work session, and I'll state it again tonight, is the fifty-eight students that are currently at the school, that they are well taken care of, and we make this a very smooth transition as humanly possible. The other comment I would have is, I really want administration to explore, if this works for, you know, if there's this population of students who work differently and learn differently in a smaller environment, I doubt it's just the seventh through twelfth graders. I'm sure there are students at younger levels that could be identified as potential students who learn better in this new environment that we're potentially going to create, or whatever we're going to do here. So I would hate to see us just be short-sighted and only look at seventh through twelfth grade when I would assume there's younger students who are coming up that maybe could be identified a little sooner. And, you know, these kind of conversations could happen with their families as well to ensure that they're successful. And yes, Mr. Schloss.
You know, one of the things we have dedicated ourselves to in this district, pre-K through twelfth grade, is personalized learning. And that's giving students voice and choice in their learning and in their, and in what they want to learn. And that's a change, again, from the past. And one of the things, I'm going to be honest with you, whatever you decide, we're going to make the transition work at the high school. But when I hired Patrick O'Connor, I hired him very specifically because he had done great work at Pathways and because he had that personalized learning background. So Mr. O'Connor is still with us at the high school, and he has dedicated himself, as we all have, to helping make sure this transition takes place as smoothly as possible.
Laura, if the board chooses to not renew the contract, would it be a out-of-line request for us to come back in March with a plan in place? Not necessarily a plan, but, but the specifics as to what we're doing so that we are making sure that we are addressing the, the needs of every one of those students, and so that, you know, that twenty-three are going to do this, fourteen are this, some of them are... Is March a realistic time? Because school will be, you know, just like, it's going to be here before, it's going to be done before we know it. And so is March enough time for us to prepare a presentation to the board with some of the specifics as to what's going to happen next year? There's three new sections going to be taught at the high school for science, for English, for mathematics. That will include more of a project-based learning, very small environment to address these students' needs. Is that doable?
So the first board meeting in March is at the fourth or the eleventh? The fourth. So we would have, I would say we'll be pretty far along there. It's, part of it depends on, we're committed to working with the families and setting up the meetings so that families can attend. And I don't know family schedules, so given that we have a little over a month, I would hope that we would have had the opportunity to accommodate all those families in that time.
Would the second meeting in March be a better...
We would absolutely be able to do it by the second meeting in March.
Laura, can you describe how, there are all sorts of great things that happen every day at Pathways. How do we learn, here are the golden nuggets, and we draw it back into our, into our process? Because what I, what I hear is, we've got great capabilities today, but there have to be lessons that we're able to learn regardless of how this, of how this vote goes. How do we, how do we incorporate that in? Can you describe that a little bit?
So one of your, the phrases you just used was, what are the lessons learned? And it would be important to understand that from a parent perspective, a student perspective, and the different perspectives of all the staff. So the guidance counselor there will have a different perspective than one of the classroom coaches, but to take the lessons learned and from that, what would they hope to see future forward happening in all classrooms? From the student and the parent perspective, and the lessons learned, what was one key piece that made them want to wake up and go to school every morning? Those would be key things for us to learn from and as part of that meeting.
I move to inform the Pathways Charter School Governance Council of our intent to not renew the Pathways Charter School contract.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
If I may.
Yes, Tiffany, yes.
Yes, I'll be voting against that because I still think renewing the charter contract would be best for all the students and even going forward.
And I would just, I would implore the administration to look at the programs that have been successful in our district over the past six, eight, ten years. One of them that, and I don't know, Mr. Schloss, if you're familiar, the Avid program, the advancement via individual determination. I felt like that Avid program at Badger really caught some kids who might have fallen through the cracks, but because of the way it was structured, it did become more of this small group identification process. It was discontinued supposedly for budgetary reasons, but I think the budget was, well...
It's an expensive program.
Okay. But then also our accelerated programs for kids who demonstrate not gifted and talented abilities, but just advanced learners, ten to twelve percent who like the challenge, who like that sense of empowerment, who want to have a very robust high school experience. And to experience, to get that, they move a little quicker perhaps through middle school and acquire some of those credits that then allow them more opportunities for the AP courses, or the college courses, or the internship. So I hope that consideration is there as we recognize that we might be non-renewing the charter tonight for Pathways, that there's ways we can fill in those gaps and give these kids an experience that is just exciting from an educational perspective.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to your motion to suggest that we include the information about administration reporting back to us in March at the second meeting with kind of an initial plan or some kind of initial, we've met with fifty-six out of fifty-eight families and, or some kind of, you know, continued reporting back to the board on the process and where we are at?
We're happy to do that, we would expect to do that. I don't know if you, you know, do you feel we need to get back to our motion?
Well, I guess I feel like it's an important piece that, you know, I certainly want parents and families and anyone watching at home to understand that we're committed to ensuring that this is happening. Not that I don't expect administration to do what you said you were going to do, but that the board also is, is very adamant that we want that report back and we, you know, want to stay on top of this information, and we'd like to be probably briefed on it in March. But then again, certainly, I would guess there'd be more planning that we have a second briefing in May, or, I don't know the timing, so I leave that to you.
It might be more appropriate to have two separate motions. I mean, that's up to you. But one motion to do what you're intended with Pathways, another motion to direct us to, or, or a, you know, to direct us to bring information back in March so that exactly, exactly what you're saying is going to happen, but maybe you do it in two separate motions so that you don't confuse the issue with the first one.
Sure, that's fine.
I have a question for Dave Ross back there. A year ago, you took a lot of Pathways Governance Council members around town trying to find another off-site location. Did you find any viable options for that at the time?
We really looked online and actually contacted a Realtor for properties that might be available just so we could get a good idea of what the cost per square foot per year was going to be. We did go to Badger and look at some space there, and then the previous year, we went to the high school and looked at some space.
I guess my, reason for my question there is just, you know, Pathways, whether it's, whether it's going to continue next year or not, is going to be, it would be a different Pathways. It would not be in, in the building that it's in now. Most likely, because of cost, it would be in our high school. You know, I had several students and parents email or speak that talked about how important it is to, for their kid not to be in the high school. Well, that, that option isn't available to us anymore. Just, you know, that's a cost thing for me. We're paying well over $10,000 per pupil for students at Pathways, and our normal population is just over 6,500. So, you know, what you described at the end of your comments, Don, about, you know, we're going to do absolutely everything we can to help these students get through high school in a very similar fashion of learning that they're used to, but it doesn't matter if Pathways continues or not, they're not going to be in that same location, period. In fact, a year ago, I sat across the table with Laura and I with the mayor and Jay Chambeau, and we literally had to beg him to let us stay in that building for this school year. So anyway, for that, that's not my only reason, but I just, I want to make that, that point that Pathways, if it continued, would be a different Pathways than it is now.
Just for clarification, Joel, you know, when I gave the budgetary numbers, I based that off thirty-eight FTE with a budget of $410,000. So, so if, if it comes in way under budget, okay, let's say it comes in at 360, which is very close to what it was last year, we very much anticipate it's going to be more than that, it's still with forty students at 360,000, it's still $9,000 a student. And so I, I want to make sure that, that you're not voting because it's 10,500 or 10,900. It might be, but it also might not be based on, on where the actual expenditures come in. But, but even, I would say, best-case scenario, which would be $360,000 with forty students, and we're at 38.8, I believe, or 37.8 based on FTE ratio, if it's forty into 360, it's 9,000. So I just want to make sure that, that that number isn't a reason for the vote. It's certainly more than our current per-student expenditure at both Badger and at the high school, but don't, I don't want it to be perceived that it is 10-9, when it might be 10-9, but it also might be 9,000 or 9.5 or something else as well.
I understand. And I also had a parent contact me a couple of times saying that she'd be willing to pay more in student fees. Well, I appreciate the offer from that parent, but I don't know that any other parent would want to do that, and I think that would just further decrease enrollment for, you know, potential, you know, future students at Pathways. So appreciate that, Don. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to one.
I'd then like to make a second motion directing administration to provide the board with...
with updates at the end of March as to the planning for our current students enrolled at Pathways, and then a later date report at your, whatever works for the families and administration, I'm guessing maybe early May or something like that. So we would like, I would like to see us have continued reporting back to the board.
That was a long motion.
That was, I'm sorry.
I'll second that. Just comments on that, I think we can get that scheduled for our second board meeting in March and kind of go from there with future updates. So, any questions on Nancy's motion there? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None, that motion carries. We will move on to our second reading of Board Policy 181.5, which is virtual attendance at board meetings. This will serve as our second reading tonight, but without Kurt here, we won't be able to vote on this one. You can see the version with the edited changes has some edits to as far as meeting of a whole and committee meetings, which is kind of what we're currently doing, and then deleting point number four, which was the limitation on the number of times in a calendar year to call in virtually. So, any further questions or comments on this one? We won't take any action on this tonight, we'll put that on our next board meeting agenda. We'll go into discussion on capital projects with Dave Ross.
This is the time of year that I come to the board and present a list of projects that we're planning on doing for this upcoming summer. Typically, we end up doing this early, and especially now, given the demand in the construction industry, so we can really get things going and actually accomplish the projects during the summer months. What we've tried to do in the past is, for the most part, pull projects from our 25-year plan, and again, we've really worked on trying to do that as well with this proposed budget. But there are a couple of items on there that I would like you to take note of. First one is the loader replacement. It's about the fourth or fifth item down. That's a $100,000 piece of equipment. I'm hoping we can do better on it, and that's a used piece of equipment, but that is really vital for our snow operation. You probably noticed the big piles that are in the parking lot out here. Given the way that parking lots are designed today with curb and gutter, we really have to truck the snow out of the parking lots, and that loader is really, it's a life-or-death piece of equipment for us. The other item that might be of note is the carpet for the libraries at the high school, and that was put in there just because we know that carpet is in hideous condition. If a referendum does pass and there's work that is done in the libraries as part of the referendum, then we'll take those dollars and actually put it to some other capital projects that are on the list, and I will bring that back to you. This year, we've set up contingency budget, so we're holding about $50,000 in contingency, again, just because of the way inflation has been going in the construction industry. And if we make it through the summer and we actually have some dollars left, you'll notice that there's not a dollar amount in for door replacements throughout the district, and that's one of the key points that I think we really need to work on to make sure that our exteriors are really safe and secure. So, that's kind of a brief rundown of the projects. Just wondering if anybody has any questions?
Your total budget was 1.5 this year?
No, it was about...
That was 1.7.
About the same. No, for capital, it was pretty close to this. So, it's gone up 4% per year since, I think, 2009. So we started at $1 million.
Dave, a ballpark of, based on what needs to be done and what you can afford to do, how much is left on the table or pushed back to the next year?
I'd have to go back and look, but there's at least $2 million worth of items.
And one other, just real quick comment, and that's, one of the frustrations is that all of these capital projects truly are just to continue to operate our school, just to do the things we need to. None of them are designed for making our classrooms, making our teaching environment a better teaching environment because there's no money available. And so that's a frustration. I know that Dave and the entire administrative team would love to say, you know what, we're going to take this 1.5 this year, and we're going to do it to enhance what we can do in our classrooms to provide a better teaching and learning environment, but unfortunately, we can't. We have to do the rust, we have to do the parking lot, we have to do the different things because we can't let our infrastructure go backwards.
Just a quick question, because I'm in the middle of a major project myself, so we did come in 2 million under budget on that one. Anyways, when you're looking at these, I'm assuming when we have all these roofing projects, you're bidding them all out at the same time to try and get, obviously, the most cost-effective pricing?
Absolutely, and the earlier the better.
And last year, did you find that you were, you know, budget-wise, I mean, pretty close, ballpark range?
Pretty close. We've been doing this for a while, so...
Yeah. You know, hopefully you can get it all in before...
Well, yeah, and that's just really the trick. Right now, though, like I said, there's, last year was a bad year for roofing because it was a really wet spring, so everybody got behind.
Sure.
And then it was beastly hot during the summer, and then it got wet again. So it was a fun summer to try to work through that stuff.
Well, you can see Mother Nature's playing with us nicely already this year, so good luck.
Dave, do we do a pretty good job of asking local plumbers, electricians, things like that to complete some of this work?
Yes, we do. We try to go out as much as we can for the local ones. A lot of them are just, you know, pretty, pretty big. The roofing projects, we specify a modified system. So, again, you have to kind of go with the contractors that can put that system on.
But like a water softener, for instance?
Oh, yeah.
I would think a local plumber could help us out with that.
Yeah, if they can put in a commercial system, they'll get the bits back on.
Great. Great, any questions for Dave? Always interesting to see this list, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move along to our proposed new middle school course, beginning in the 1920 school year, and it's a music class.
It's a music class at the middle school, and Darcy Ketter was instrumental in the proposal. She approached us with the idea that our current music classes, as rigorous as they are, are not meeting all the needs of all the students who have interest and would like to grow their musical talents and explore a wide variety of musical expression. And so Darcy came forward and proposed the course before you. Want to speak about it a little bit?
Sure, sure. I actually printed out and brought the course overview that I submitted. This has been something I've been thinking about for years. I've been at the middle level now, spent a year at Silverbrook, and then I think I've been at Badger five or six years. And ever since we've gone to the intermediate and then middle school, we've, our students have performance-only choices for band, choir, orchestra, and there are no general music, exploratory-type music opportunities or options for students, and there is definitely a population that would be better served with something else that was not just geared toward performance-only. And it's impacted me personally as a teacher, mostly because even though my courses at Badger are leveled, or attempting to level them, being with choir and not having a physical instrument to hold or anything, I tend to be getting a really broad population of students, and I'm the one dealing with students that aren't really, they would be much better off in a different type of music setting that I know I could provide for them. So I'm going to read for you just the course description. "I'd like to offer a hands-on music exploration course for all students at a foundational level. It would be an opportunity, again, for all students to explore music through diverse activities and experiences in the classroom setting with a non-performance emphasis. There will be performing going on, and we may even extend our performances beyond the walls, you know, depending on the, you know, the population, but it would not be for a performance end as the, you know, the final summative activities. It would focus on meeting students at their skill level while exploring a variety of musical genres and settings. We would use the elements of music to listen, to play, to create music, and also learn about music performance, so that perhaps a student that didn't know enough about it or wasn't ready at that time, perhaps through this course, may be able to entertain a performance course down the road." There is a strong correlation between involvement in the creative arts and overall academic success, so I think the more students we can get continuing on with some type of music exploration, it's going to be good for them as they continue on through school. Too many I see coming out of Silverbrook, having been forced into either band, choir, or orchestra, then just drop when they have a choice and don't take any music because it's all very much performance emphasis, and the level of expertise expected continues to go up as those years go on because we're getting them ready for high school, you know, quite honestly. Differentiated learning, I would put together projects and products, and we would tailor it to each student's individual abilities and strengths, even within the class, depending on, you know, who was signing up. Group performances could be adjusted individually so that every student would be challenged appropriately and encouraged to use their particular skills to achieve musicality to their potential, which is something that I just don't think that all students are currently being given that opportunity. So, I had one other thing I wanted to share. The current model, well, and I think I alluded to this a little bit, but the current model for music instruction places all students in their choice of performance area, band, choir, orchestra, for five and six. They meet every other day. Then, the curriculum advances significantly when they come to Badger, and the expected skill outcomes for seventh and eighth grade are going to be much higher because they're meeting daily, and we're able to, you know, put in a lot more rigor for those students. For many students, this advancing performance track is not an appropriate fit for a number of reasons. Perhaps they lack interest in performance, they may have anxiety about performance. In fact, I have several students who do all the work in class and then cannot go to a performance, to a concert, because, for any number of reasons. They, some students aren't even able to maintain, or they don't have the skills that extend beyond that five, six level in order to work at those upper levels of proficiency. There are also students that come with behavior obstacles and things, where I think if they were in a different type of musical setting, they could get a lot more out of it if there weren't the high-stakes performances that were always, you know, hanging out there. I'd like the course to offer music in a broader terms and expose students to a rich and diverse experience set will fill the current void of Badger course offerings. It also really aligns with other fundamentals courses that are currently available at Badger. I would call this Music for All, and it would very much align with what art now has, and it offers called Art for All, and it's been very successful. And I could even see some collaboration between she and I as we develop curriculum and continue to work on making those offerings even better, so.
So this is not up for vote tonight? We would bring this back next board meeting for you to vote on whether or not you would approve of this course, but do you have any questions at this time that you'd like to further answer?
I don't know, and that's a really good question.
We would look around 18. 18 is like a kind of our cut right now, but as a new course, if we have like 17, we probably won't run it, you know? We'll watch that as it's, as the enrollments are occurring, should you approve it? We have time for this to be added, yeah.
Yeah. Another thing that I had, there would be no cost, really, because even though it's an additional class, my thought would be, in order to make this happen, any, I would reduce my choral courses by just taking one of those classes and dividing those students into other sections, which would actually make those sections bigger, which is okay in a performance-type class, which I'm currently at mid-20s, and so, you know, for those to go up even to mid-30s, that would be okay, and it would be a nice offset, so.
Do we offer anything like this at the high school?
No, in fact, I had in the last paragraph. Nor is there anything offered at Silverbrook. The ultimate goal, or my ultimate goal, I think personally, would be to develop a similar course offering at the high school level, and even perhaps backing it up to Silverbrook, so that there's potential collaboration and sharing of materials, and also extended experiences so that it could be spiraled and, you know, upwards, so that we would be continuing to meet the needs of those students as they mature and continue on through the program. There's certainly, you know, music is, it's just wide open, and there's so many different directions to go beyond performance, and...
So would this class take the place of a performance class at Badger?
It would take, like, with our current, keeping our current staffing structure in place, it would take the place of a section.
Let me ask, I've got a fifth grader, and he, I think, is required to take a music class, and like you said, they're all performance at Silverbrook. As a seventh and eighth grader, could you take this course instead of a performance class?
Yes.
And as a person who was asked by my teacher to mouth the words in the Christmas program...
I would never, I would never do that.
I'm all in favor of the, I'm all in favor of the course, but I also hope that we don't start losing our performance.
No, and I, I'm a performance teacher first and foremost, and I think that, in speaking with the other performance teachers, I think we all see this as a real need. In order for our performance classes to be able to continue to move at the pace we'd like them to move so that they're ready for high school, there just is a, there's a group of students that doesn't fit, they don't fit into that mold, at least at that point, and perhaps some other experiences might lead them down that path, but I think music doesn't need to be a performance, you know, and yet, I do think that it, I think it's going to strengthen our performance groups. So...
Great.
Yeah, I appreciate you just being sensitive to identifying the needs that exist and being willing to say, hey, let me, let me show the administration and the board what this can look like and how we can scale and get kids involved in this, which has positive effects in our academic learning and learning development and everything else. So, thank you, and you are the ultimate performance of the week, and we're so proud of you.
Thanks.
Let me exactly tell us a little bit, Darcy, about what you brought in.
There's a, there's a group called the Lake Moraine Area, and it used to be a conference that would compete and do all sorts of things musically. We've expanded that and turned it into just, now, the only thing that exists or that's left of the conference is this middle-level festival. And when West Bend redid their auditorium, they'd been doing it in Grafton for years, and when we redid the auditorium, I had been at Badger enough and knew enough of the program that I said, hey, if you're willing to do it, we would love to host. And so, we bring together 10 middle-school directors, and they bring, oops, sorry, they bring a group of their students, mostly eighth graders, and we bring in a guest clinician, and they spend the day, we've worked on the music ahead of time with all the students, and then they spend the day with that clinician and then put on a concert at the end. And we just brought in a really big name, and it was a big deal, and it was wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
Great, any more questions? We'll put this on the agenda for our next board meeting. All right, thank you, Darcy. We're coming down the homestretch here. We've got a first reading of a new board policy 224, which is the Board Superintendent Relations. This is a new policy. I had an email from Mr. Schmiggy asking why we weren't fast-tracking this one, but this is a new policy, so I'll have to go through the readings, but turn it over to you, Don.
Yes, sir, it's not a policy in place right now. See, the policy committee looked at several different options, and this was one from Wasby that made sense. We did change some things around, they talked about district administrator, and we inserted where the word superintendent is. We tried to make it consistent with the terminology that we currently use. Mr. Hamelman was going to present tonight, and he isn't here, but for the most part, it just does a nice job of identifying what some of the roles are of the superintendent, as well as some of the expectations of the school board. We changed the policy so that it uses terminology that we use throughout the district. With that, we will also need to develop an AR policy that goes with this to make sure that it, that the specifics are, this is just the general, so we'd have the specifics go with it. And so, first reading, and so it would come back again next month as well.
Great, any questions on this one? All right, we will move on to a report on people nondiscrimination.
So I'm reporting for Sharon Kalis tonight. Sharon, this is something that's done annually, and you have the background, it was in the executive summary, so the background is simply what the law states, that reported instances of bullying or harassment... of bullying or harassment, incidences that we've identified as bullying or harassment are reported in the OCI report each year. And so Sharon had submitted the three-year numbers over the last three years for incidences of harassment or discrimination that were either resolved formally, resolved informally, or any that went outside the district to be resolved. Part of this report, then, is to share what is being done to reduce bullying in the district, and so I'm going to share a little bit from our K-12 counselors and what they are doing, as well as some other pieces of information. So one of the pieces we have district and community-wide is the reporting system we have. So as you know, we've partnered with the West Bend Police Department, and they're currently monitoring the helpline for us so that when students call the safeline to report anything, if it's bullying or harassment, or, you know, we are notified by the police right away so that we can begin investigating that. At times, depending on how the report is made, the West Bend Police Department would investigate those. We have not had a large number of calls into the number that have involved our own investigations, but the system is available 24 hours a day. In K-4, we are working on the specific language with regard to our PBIS expectations, so students know what's expected of them and what they can expect of others as they go out throughout the day. There are specific lessons in classrooms across the K-4 and 5, 6, with regard to what bullying is, what harassment is, and what to do if you're a bystander, what to do if it's happening to you. There are specific forms, so let's talk slips at the elementary level, the form looks a little different at Silverbrook, at Badger, and at the high school, but one of the things the elementaries did was try to keep it consistent. So if a student is moving from school to school, the same procedure exists if they are feeling bullied, feeling harassed, same procedure for identifying that. In response to any complaints or concerns about bullying, the administration and the counseling department work together to do those investigations, and then, based on each individual situation, determine what needs to happen. Do we need a behavior plan for a particular student? Do we need a safety plan for a particular student? What happens as a result of that? One of the areas that we have, we have a digital citizenship plan and digital citizenship education within the district, and that's really essential because there, we hear a lot about cyberbullying, and those are maybe things that are occurring outside the district that still influence the school learning environment. And so the, what we're doing with regard to our students as part of the digital citizenship across all levels is really important to that, as well as making sure our families are informed of that. I'm going to remind the public that in April, there will be a meeting for families to come together. If I'm correct, it's April 10th or 11th, one of those two dates, more information will be coming, for parents to learn what they can do with regard to keeping their students safe online.
Cool, thank you. Any questions for Laura? All right, thank you, Laura. Drive safe heading home tonight, Laura, thanks for being here. Committee report was, we had a board work session a week ago tonight to gather information and have a discussion on the Pathways Chutter School contract. Don, it's going to be your superintendent's report next. Do you want to call off school for tomorrow, or are we on tomorrow?
No, we're on for tomorrow, but I will give you an update on, on some weather policies as I go forward with that. So just three quick items for you. First of all, usually in January, we report out to the board on early graduation numbers. And so this year, for students who graduated, who will graduate one full year early, there are six students, three from each of the two schools, so three from East, three from West. And semester, we had 39 students who completed early, 19 of them are from East and 20 from West. So tit-for-tat, East and West, both of them are doing the exact same numbers as far as early graduation. So that's the first item. The second one is, when you talked about committee of the whole, earlier this year, we had talked about a, either a work group or committee of the whole, and we've recommended it to be a committee of the whole, to talk about acceleration, I talk about AP classes, honor classes, and so it's time for that committee to meet. And so we're recommending that February 11th, not this Monday, a week from Monday, is that correct, Laura? A week from Monday, we would have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the acceleration process, to discuss AP classes and honors classes, and some of the different options that we have at the middle school as well as in the high school. And so what Laura would really like is if you have specific questions that you would like answered prior to that meeting, if you can get those to Laura as quickly as possible, then she will try to get those ready for us on the 11th when we have that meeting. Haven't set a time yet, I don't know, what's the, 5:30, if that works for everybody, 5:30 on the 11th, is that too late, too early?
Are you out of town yet?
I am. So I am out of town, but this really will be, so I'm out, but I thought this is still a topic that Laura and I'll have a thorough discussion prior to the meeting as well as after the meeting to make sure we're all on the same page. Ken?
I probably will not be in the meeting. I'm sorry. I'm not going to be.
Okay. Okay.
I would, I would also suggest, if we start at 5:30, why don't we set an end time as well, and so that we're not here for four or five hours on a Monday night? If we say 5:30 to no later than 7:00 or something like that. Nancy?
I'm here. I'm in the meeting.
Perfect, we got to be out of here by 7:00. 6:45, yeah, so if we, yeah, Laura, just as you planned for that meeting, just so you know.
The next topic, and Nancy, thank you for bringing that up, is that Nancy has a list of events that we need some assistance in talking about the referendum, not to propose, not to be an advocate or proponent or opponent, just to give them the facts. And so Nancy has that list, and I think she has shared it. If not, she will share it again, but if there's any opportunity for you to help participate in that, that would be great. And so next Monday, when we have a school board meeting, I'm going to be just a few minutes late because I'm going to go to the West Bend City Council, and so they have their meeting next Monday, and so I'm first on the agenda at 6:30, and so I'll be there. But we truly want to get out in front of as many organizations as we can, and so Nancy has done a great job of lining up those organizations for us at the same time, if you know of any additional ones, if there's any businesses, corporate entities, that would like to hear some information, not necessarily to sell them on yes or no, but just so that they have the facts and now they can get it in an easy environment, if you would let Nancy know, and we would try to organize it as best we can. Last comment that I had, and that is the weather-related comments, and so this looks like it's going to be a challenging week, and just to give you a little heads-up on what we do, we rely very closely with the National Weather Service, and so they do an excellent job of updating us. They'll have a webinar at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, before we make the decision. Sometimes it's an easy one based on the night before, so last night, we knew based on the projections that we, if at all possible, we'll call it off the night before as opposed to the next morning, and sometimes we can't. As far as Wednesday goes, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, what our policy or procedure has been in the past is that if it's a wind chill advisory, we'll still have school. If it's a wind chill warning, we will not. And so it appears as if the wind chill warning will go into effect at 6:00 tomorrow evening, okay? And it will be in effect the entire day of Wednesday, and will end Thursday morning. And so can't make that determination yet, but if you were a betting man or woman, you could probably bet on the fact that Wednesday is going to be a difficult day for us to have school based on the projections of wind chill warning for Wednesday. Hopefully, it will be done early enough on Thursday that we can continue to have school and then kind of bounce back out of it. So just a little bit on the weather and how we make those decisions. The last thing I'd say is that it's been great to work with superintendent from Slinger, from Hartford, as well as Kewaskom, to kind of all hang together and make some unanimous decisions.
That's great. I tell my kids that I'm the one who calls off school, and I get some brownie points for that, but obviously, Don, you, Don stays on top of that, and appreciate the early call off from yesterday.
Those of you watching at home, stop texting all of us, it's all Don who makes that call, not us.
Don makes the call, not me, but my kids think it's me, but that's okay. All right, future agenda items for the board, we will be meeting next week on February 4th, that was a date that we moved because Don's out of town on the 11th, so we will have a regular board meeting on the 4th. We have a potential policy meeting on the 4th, and I suppose maybe Chris and Deb and Ike and Don can talk about whether we have that or not. If we do, we'll certainly email the whole board a time on that. But otherwise, a regular board meeting at 6:30. Then we will meet on Monday, February 11th, for a committee, a committee of a whole meeting, we'll do that right down here, I assume, at 5:30, and then we will meet again on February 25th for a regular board meeting at 6:30. And then, of course, we'll meet in March, March 4th, so. Any questions on the schedule? Any other items for follow-up? Appreciate everyone being here tonight, travel home safely, and we will have school tomorrow. We have not, Don has not made a decision on Wednesday, but it's not looking good, but we'll wait for the all-call system on that, so everybody have a safe evening, and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.